Good evening in these extraordinary times. Welcome to the December 10th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, for all you folks that are on to be heard about the Brian Sinclair, appeal number 2020044. That has been adjourned to February 11th.
2021.
So that's been adjourned 2011, February 11th.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
2021, February 11th. There we go.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
So let's have a, let's have a reading. Appeal number 20200044, Brian Sinclair is asked for an adjournment to February 11th, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Carissa? Carissa?
Okay. Appeal number 2019049, Flying Point Two Associates LLC, 53 Sweetsley Avenue, Riverhead, tax map number 600123439.1, RA 40 zoning, for an interpretation of chapter 301, section 8A1, where a single one-family dwelling is permitted and two one-family dwellings are not permitted.
Okay, who's up on that? Unmute. Is that you, Kim?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, for the applicant Kimberly Judd, also for the applicant, for the first time on the application is John Wagner of Stilman and Ballin. John, you wanna, so they can see which square you are?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. John Wagner, Stilman Ballin, Adler and Hyman, 100 Motor Parkway, Hop Hog, New York, for the applicant.
And I believe my clients are also here, Mike Bolo. Do you wanna wave your hand, Mike? And Tom Lawinger? Are you here, Tom? I think he's on.
Yes, I'm here as well.
Okay. So on December 4th, I had submitted a few documents, six items to the board. One was the affidavit of Daniel White, who was the predecessor and title on this property. And he submitted an affidavit. I also submitted the LIPA email reply. As you recall, at the last meeting, a request was made to put in a request for LIPA records. You'll see where the, the pink tab is, where it says LIPA, that the email response says that they cannot comply with the requests unless we get, with that, we can't, LIPA cannot provide customer account information or proof without the written consent of the account holder, which would be all of the tenants who have occupied the apartment. But what we did, what we were able to get was my client called the water department, the town of Riverhead Water District, and he was able to get a water meter reading from 2016 to 2020 showing usage. So I think that's very helpful. And we also submitted the, an engineering report from Ralph Pacifico. And the report details with pictures that the engineer, in his opinion, stated that the building had been built in the 1920s and 1930s. And he listed the items. Why, I don't, I'll go through them if the board wants me to. But he took pictures of the apron, he took pictures of siding, and it was his opinion that the building was constructed in the 1920s, 1930s, and that it had never been moved or relocated, that it was the original building and it had never been added on to. The other item I submitted were the deeds from this property from 1929 to 2002 to demonstrate that when the rear part of the lot was split off in the 1970s, that the, it wasn't done by the White family, who had been in ownership of this property from 1929 and on until recently. And the deed descriptions always remained the same and never changed. And we believe that the 1979 tax map, where it shows Commissioner of Social Services for the back real lot, that that was the reason that the county had split it off and the county then consolidated, then merged them and put them back together. Did I get everything here? The water usage, the affidavit. So in total, we have submitted six affidavits demonstrating the existence of the garage, the apartment above the garage beginning in the 1950s and through the fall slash winter of 2017. And if there's any questions for the board, my clients are here, and I'd be happy to answer them.
I want to ask you about the water district. How come he didn't ask for prior bills prior to 16?
Because the property owner Danny White was still living there and the apartment was still occupied. His affidavit states that he didn't move out until 2017. And when he moved out, there was still somebody living there.
He claimed he had a tenant in there.
I'm sorry?
Danny White, in an affidavit, claimed he had a tenant?
Yes.
But he doesn't know his name?
Uh...
Didn't know his name? He didn't know his tenant's name? I guess I, what kind of rent was he getting? Just curious.
I don't know. I don't know. But we also had affidavits.
That's all.
There were also affidavits from the two neighbors on each side saying that there was somebody living in the apartment. Marson Tuckman said that he moved out even in July of 2017 and that there was still somebody living in the apartment. And the neighbor on the other side, Alan Lewis, stated that that the person moved out fall slash winter of 2017. And as I said before, none of the neighbors have appeared in objection on this. And it's not in these two neighbors' best interest to write the affidavit, and they did so willingly.
That's good.
Without problem.
So, Kim, would it be fair to say then, based on the submissions you made to the board, that the, that the property, is your client's position that the property has been owner-occupied the entire time it's been used as an accessory rental dwelling?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I think, I think you said, is it my client's position that the previous property owner was owner-occupied? Is that what you said?
Yeah, has it, it's based on the submissions you've made, it appears that the property has been an owner-occupied accessory rental dwelling since it was built. It seems like that's the position you're taking.
For the, the main dwelling or the garage apartment?
That, that if the garage apartment was rented, it seems to me that Mr. White and, and the previous submissions indicate that it has been owner-occupied from the very beginning and has never been anything other than owner-occupied.
Yeah, yes, the, the White family had been the one living in the main dwelling.
Okay. So it's your position, it was a pre-existing, non-conforming?
Owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied accessory rental dwelling?
I, if I may interject, I think that the, there's a little confusion here as to the main house and the accessory dwelling itself. I think the affidavits are consistent in indicating that the garage apartment, which is the rear of the main house, was rented out to non-family members for its history.
Correct.
The house was owner-occupied by the White family, but there were always tenants in the garage apartment in the back.
And it was, the rental was used to assist the owners, offset the owner's expenses? That's what the affidavit is saying here?
Yes, the rental income from the accessory apartment helped with the owner's expenses on the property. That's correct, that's stated in the affidavit.
Okay.
Do you have any other, anything else to say about this?
Well, if I could just summarize one particular issue when it was just mentioned, which was the idea of the non-conforming use. I know that's in, this is my first involvement in this matter, but prior to this time, there was some discussion of the zoning history of the property. And I believe that the, that it's been established without contradiction that the property was built in 1929, that the garage apartment dates from that time, that there's been no alteration in the garage apartment over the intervening years. And it's been consistently occupied by tenants all the way through. And under your, your code provisions of your, of your current code, based upon the evidence that's been presented, it appears to fully qualify both as a building and as the use for tenancy purposes as a non-conforming building and use.
I think though, Mr. Wagner, the testimony previously was that there were some gaps in that usage, that it wasn't consistently occupied from the beginning till the day of this application, that there were some gaps in the usage. And I think that's evidenced by some of the water records here, too. And I'd be interested to see what the prior water records are because, you know, we don't, we don't have witnesses here to testify as to the, you know, we're getting affidavits. And I think the board would really appreciate the opportunity to question some of those people as to their, the depth of their recollection because I think as Mr. Barnes pointed out, you know, it's there, you know, I think he'd like to ask him who, who the tenant was perhaps and what the rent was and how he knew the person and those kinds of things because some of the other affidavits that we got sort of were very general. They weren't really detailed in terms of what the name of the tenant was, how, where they, how they knew them, how long they lived there. And they were also covering large spans of time. So they would give an affidavit, for example, that was, covered a period of 30, 40, 50 years. I think that's, you know, hard to, to remember those details. And perhaps if we had witnesses, the, the board members could ask some questions to sort of, you know, just probe into the actual depth of their recollection.
So, did anybody try to get any kind of water bills prior to 2016 to establish that it was consistently occupied for more than one year? Did the water, is there separate meters for the water on that property?
There are not separate meter, this is Tom Lawinger speaking. There are not separate meters on the water bill. I did try to, I did try to obtain water bills prior to 2016. I was told by the water district that in 2016, they transitioned to a new payment system. As is witness, if you have the details associated with it, actually, the first billing cycle shows a couple of zeros and then it carries over 465 cubic feet of water to the next period, which is actually a carryover from prior periods. So they were not able to, long story short, they were not able to provide me any details prior to 2016 when they had the old system in process.
Okay. And we're not able to get any records for the meters?
The electrical meters? No, we were not, no, per the note, they said that we were not able to provide that information to you. I, I made the request of them the day after our last meeting. It took about approximately four weeks for them to reply back to me, whereupon they said that due to privacy provisions, they were not able to provide that.
Okay.
Is there any reason that some of these people weren't brought to the hearing to be witnesses?
I believe only the first hearing, I can't even remember what it was, but that was pre-COVID. And subsequent, some of these people are in their 80s. And during, at that point, the zoning board hearings were by Zoom.
They could still appear by Zoom. They could have, you know, at that point, they could appear by Zoom.
Well, I could say, in the 20-plus years I've been practicing law and sometimes before this board, I don't recall affidavits never have been of a sufficient level for proof. I don't know if John can speak more to that, but...
I just, it's just a very long period of time we're talking about. You know, and I, and I think there are often times people will come and testify on behalf of an application.
Well, I would have to disagree with you. You stated before that there were gaps. There are no gaps in these affidavits, there are...
No, but in the, well, I think it was, I think there was once, wasn't the property foreclosed?
There was, yes, there was from, that's why Danny, I believe Danny White moved out was because the property was in foreclosure.
So during the period of foreclosure, there was no tenant there? No one was collecting rent? Somebody was squatting there perhaps, but it wasn't a landlord-tenant relationship?
He moved out in 2017. You can be in foreclosure for a year, sometimes more than that.
Oh, way more than a year, we know that, yeah.
And I, and I do know plenty of times, because I've represented landlords, people do squat. And I think, but there's been, there's been usage during this time period between, if you look at the years, 2016 to 2020, there, there is water usage on the property.
I'm more interested in the past years, from 16 back. I don't believe it was always fully rented, that's all. And of course, it's all by, you know, talking to people that I know. So I, I would like to see a tenant's list or who lived there. There's gotta be some record of people living there, has to be. Mailing addresses, you know, old post office boxes. Maybe the post office can provide some information, I don't know. I don't know. But right now, you know, I would have to, I would have to, I would want to see what happened prior to 16.
And, and no leases, there aren't any leases for any of these tenants, correct?
Correct.
So are both buildings are totally not occupied right now?
They are.
They're vacant? Okay.
No, 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 they're occupied.
They're occupied?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I guess this is because you needed a rental permit, right?
That's what triggered, I think, this whole thing because as you know, there were no COs on the property. And when the client got the property in January of 2018, he submitted rental permits, and then that's what triggered a, a letter from the building department, where's your COs? And this is how the ball started rolling on this.
So, so if we talk to the building department, what, what do they have that says that you didn't have rentals? What, what, what proof do they have in their records that you can remind me or tell me? Why, why is it that they don't have anything that proves that they were a continued use?
Probably because the previous property owner never submitted a rental permit application.
Okay.
Not unusual.
That's true. That's true. Okay.
If I could make a couple of suggestions that might help, help to move this along. I think that with regard to the comment earlier about gaps in the, in the time periods, I think it would be helpful to the board if we were to put together a timeline showing what the various affidavits say as to continued occupancy. Just put it in summary form for you so you can see the continuity of it. And the other comment I would make is that with regard to any questions you have about specific affidavits, we would like more information. You know, we're in an unusual situation now with COVID and elderly people and whatnot. But perhaps, you know, we can, we can help that a bit. If you have specific questions about the affidavits, we might be able to take them back to the affianz and get, and get you answers to your questions. I mean, that's really what, what you want. So any way we can assist with that, we're willing to do it.
But I think the bigger issue here is that you're asking for the determination that the property is a two-family dwelling, pre-existing two-family dwelling. And really what you've submitted indicates that it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence that was owner, had an owner occup, was, which was, had an accessory owner, sorry, accessory apartment, but that the property has been perpetually owner-occupied. So that, that's not necessarily illegal if you get an accessory apartment permit from the building department. And so I don't know what testimony would be submitted by your client that would establish a pre-existing two-family residence, given that everything you've submitted so far indicates that it's an accessory apartment. And those are two different things under the code's definition.
I think it was, it was characterized properly at the very beginning, which is that, in, in the call of the meeting, actually, which is that it's not that, it's a, a two-family residence per se, which would indicate a single building with two dwellings in it. But you have a, a single-family home and a separate residence, freestanding residence on the same property that has been rented out over the years. So the, the situation there is that you have two residences on one parcel. That's the, that's the condition it's been in for, for decades and decades prior to zoning. And that, that's what we've attempted to prove. And, you know, we're willing to marshal all the evidence that demonstrates that in written form for you as a summary.
So under the code, two single-family residences are not permitted?
Well, that, that's correct, but this is a, this is a non-conforming situation, a pre-located zoning.
But what, what may happen is that because there's a break in, in rental, it may invalidate that, that prior use. That, that's what we need to have proof of.
Right, well, we, we, we submit that...
Continued use.
We, we submit that there has not been a break. And like I said, I'd like to demonstrate that for you. And I, I haven't seen, I mean, I'm, I'm new to the application, but I haven't seen any proof to the contrary that it, that would indicate there was a break in the use, so. But again, we're, we're prepared to demonstrate in summary form for you. So maybe, maybe that, that helps along.
I just want to check one thing. Just bear with me for one second.
Warren, do you have, you see all the 300s? Who's missing? Oh, here's a picture. The woman talking about.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
That's it for tonight? Okay. So we'll ask you to submit one other paperwork that you have, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Is that in January, Mr. Chairman?
It is the, let's get a date here.
14th.
14th? January 14th.
Okay, thank you, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Holidays, I agree.
You're on base, Jim.
Okay, who's got the reading?
I don't, I don't have.
I think they might be in the back.
Yeah, I got, I got. Okay, I moved an appeal number 2019-049, Flying Point Two Associates, being adjourned until the, until January 14th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Barnes?
So see you folks on the 14th of January. Carissa, you're up.
Okay. Appeal number 2020038, Crown Castle, Fresh Pond Avenue, Calverton, tax map number 67722, APZ zoning, for variance relief from chapter 301, section 277B4A, where proposed side yard setback is 81.08, minimum required is 120. And where proposed rear yard setback is 72.92 feet and minimum required is 120 feet.
Thank you. All right, who's up?
I am. Good evening, board. My name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder. I'm here for the applicant, Crown Castle. This is a rehearing of an application. We were already before this board approximately a month ago for our initial public hearing. So we can go briefly over the application. Again, the application is to construct a wireless telecommunications facility at the subject property. I'm going to share the screen now for the site plan. Again, the application is to construct an exist, construct a facility at the subject property and remove two existing wireless telecommunications facilities owned and operated by Crown Castle. One facility has AT&amp;T equipment on it. The other facility has Verizon and Sprint equipment on it. So the application here is that we have a need to remove these two existing towers and we have the added...
Whoops.
Where we have two existing towers, we can reduce it and have one. So the application, again, is, is to present for this board, there is a local code requirement for the wireless telecommunications facilities requiring the fall zone radius. And so we do not meet the setbacks for two of the property lines. One is the rear property line and one is the southern side property line. We do meet the exact, code-required setback for the front yard and for the northern side yard that shares with the residential property. But we've also built in the tower a hinge point that reduces the fall zone radius so that in the unlikely event that there is a collapse, the tower will completely fall within the property lines. So really, the, the application before this board is that, and I submitted a memorandum in support of the application with further written reasons why we're deserving of the variance requested, is really for whether or not we're deserving of that reduced setback because we've shown that we have reduced the fall zone radius by including the hinge point. And we're meeting the setbacks at the two property lines where we can meet them for the, for the northern property line that has the residential property and the front property line that, that butts the street. Since our last application, we made one submission. We submitted that we'd like to be good neighbors. We do submit that the record right now has a negative declaration from the town board with respect, with respect to aesthetic impacts. But we have heard the comments from the residential property to the north, and we'd like to be as good neighbors as we possibly can. So we would like to offer additional screening or additional plantings along that property line so that we can do whatever we can to help minimize any visibility of the tower from that property. But again, we do say that the application before this board, while that, you know, visibility and impact on nearby properties is part of its review, there is in part of this record a negative declaration that speaks to the visual impacts. In speaking with counsel for the board, I understand that one of the main reasons for the rehearing tonight is the board wanted additional assurances on part of this application is the removal of the two existing towers. And, and we wanted to assure the board that under the local zoning code, once the two existing towers are removed, they cannot be rebuilt. And I'd like to go through the zoning code... And I'd like to go through the zoning code, uh, a little bit, just to kind of discuss why that is. So, the zoning code discusses these towers as, um, they call them non-conforming uses under the zoning code, but it's actually a pre-existing tower, is what the, the zoning code refers it to. And this is section three oh one two eighty. So, it basically states that pre-existing towers shall be permitted as they presently exist. And it's allowed for routine maintenance, even including the replacement of a new tower of the like in construction and height. And this ties back into an earlier, uh, provision of the zoning code, which encourages the replacement of lattice towers with monopoles. Again, one of the aspects of our project is we will be replacing a lattice tower on one of the facilities and having only one monopole on the new one. But again, new construction, other than routine maintenance of a pre-existing tower, has to comply with the requirements of this chapter. And the requirements of this chapter, again, you have to go through a full special permit process, the process that this applicant is going through. And no telecommunications tower can be erected, moved, reconstructed, changed, altered, or modified, um, without getting the special permit and approvals from the town board. So, in short, they have to go through a full zoning process. We also submitted in our last, uh, submission to the board in our November sixth letter, a sworn statement from Crown Castle that speaks to that the three carriers that operate, that's T-Mobile, because Sprint and T-Mobile have merged, Verizon and AT&amp;T, all have agreements with Crown Castle, and we have the rights and authority to relocate their equipment, and we have the rights and authority to move them to the tower that we're proposing to move them. And one of the things that's required, and it was brought up at the last meeting, that there may be a tower built just in spite, that once we take down these towers, that they're going to build one anyway. Well, under the local zoning code, you have to re-establish that tower as it presently existed. To presently exist, that needs to be a cell tower. And the cell tower needs a cellphone carrier operator. And there's only four of them that exist in the country licensed by the FCC. The Sprint and T-Mobile merger had to go through a Department of Justice investigation and approval because they were worried about the monopoly provision of going from only four carriers to three. And what was done in that, uh, Department of Justice decision was a little bit of a divestiture that made the way for DISH to be the fourth carrier. And Crown Castle will attest tonight that we have also just recently locked up the national contract for DISH Network's deployment of wireless telecommunications equipment. So, from, even though this is a land-use application, there is a federal component to it because of the broadcasting over the airwaves. And so, while a land-use application is supposed to be to the land and not the user, that's not the case with the FCC-licensed applicants. They're the only applicants that are authorized to provide this use. Since we have the agreements with all three of the operating ones and the fourth one that could potentially exist, we've locked up the market so that there's no antenna that can be installed on a tower once we move the equipment to our new facility and re, and build the tower that we're proposing as part of this application. Per your own zoning code, the applicant has gone through, uh, upgrades to the, the existing facilities, and they have to go through a planning department review to have anything, even a generator installed on the site. And the first thing that that planning department review or the building department review would have to ask for is what antenna are you putting on this facility? And since they cannot answer that question, and they cannot provide an antenna to go on the facility, and again, the record before this board is we have a sworn statement attesting to the fact that we have the agreements and we have the rights and authorities with those existing carriers, there's no telecommunications tower, there's no telecommunications equipment that they can put up. Now, the zoning code does speak to a TV or a radio tower. However, those, again, are not the presently existing tower. That'd be a substantial change. Another thing about a substantial change is the fact that a TV tower, a radio tower, requires a three-hundred-foot-tall tower. A hundred-and-twenty-foot-tall lattice tower, a hundred-and-twenty-foot-taller structure of any kind would not be able to use for radio or TV. And I would also submit that switching from a cell tower to a radio or TV tower switches the types of antennas and switches the types of use that this, uh, presently existing tower has. So, from a legal standpoint, I hope the board feels assured that once we take down these two existing towers and relocate the existing carriers, there can be no towers built on this, on the existing properties. Um, they don't have the right to just reconstruct the tower. They have to re-establish this use that is there now, which on one property is an AT&amp;T tower. On the other property is a cell tower with Sprint, which is now T-Mobile, and Verizon. I understand we're going to hear some comments from the public tonight. I, I understand they've retained counsel. Um, but we, again, I think we are now a few miles in the rearview mirror from a zoning discussion on whether or not we've shown the, the, uh, that we are deserving of the variances requested for the setbacks. Which, again, I would bring the board back to. That's really the discussion for this board. Um, the approval tonight for the variances does not approve the facility, does not approve the project. We still have to go before the town board and the planning board for both special permit approval and site plan approval. Um, the issue, I think, before this board can be narrowly focused to the fact that we've included the hinge point in the fall zone radius as reduced to being well within the property lines. Uh, we've shown, and in support with the other information I've included in my memorandum in support, we've shown that we're deserving of the variances requested.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Were any variances granted for the two current towers before then?
Um, no, they're, they're both pre-existing, this zoning code. So, they have certificate of occupancies from, I believe, nineteen ninety-eight and nineteen ninety-five. So, they're my subjects. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's why they have the status of not, uh, existing tower with special permits and all the land use rights. They have a very narrow allowable use, which is under your zoning code. It's even in the debt, it, it's in our own definition. I brought it up before in section three oh one two eighty. They're called pre-existing towers, which your zoning code has a specific definition for and specific rights on how they can operate a pre-existing tower. Okay, thank you.
All right, who else has been heard on this?
Is anybody waiting?
Is anyone else on it?
I'd like to be heard.
A few hands.
Twenty people?
Who's up?
I'll, I'll speak.
All right, Chris.
Uh, good evening, uh, Chairman McLaughlin and members of the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm here, I, uh, Christopher Kent, Farrell Fritz, PC, one hundred Motor Parkway, Hop Dog, New York. On behalf of SM Calverton LLC and Lysom Associates LLC. Uh, SM Calverton LLC is the property owner directly adjacent to the rear property line. We, uh, we are the ones who are, our property's going to be setback seventy-two point ninety-two feet, uh, where a hundred-and-twenty feet is required. That's the request. Uh, that's a forty percent, uh, reduction in the setback, uh, from the SM Calverton property line. Uh, SM Calverton, uh, the Lawler property, as you may know, is a cleared piece of land. Uh, it's a sand and gravel pit, outdoor, commercial, uh, vehicle and material storage and auto repair yard on, uh, Fresh Pond. It's fully cleared site. The adding a hundred-and-twenty-foot, uh, tall monopole to this site will absolutely create an unscreened, adverse visual impact for all who travel along Fresh Pond Avenue. In comparison, neither of the existing cell tower sites on Fresh Pond Avenue is visible from the road. Uh, the presentation to the town on other, other instances tonight, uh, Mr. Kenny, uh, limited his presentation to just the request for the variance. Uh, he had spoken in the past about, uh, and, and the secret determination made by the town board was based upon the reduction in the visual impacts by adding this single monopole tower where two towers exist, currently exist. Uh, and he's now providing, trying to provide assurances that by, uh, putting up this replacement tower, that the two existing towers will no longer be, uh, will no longer exist, and that, uh, you will be replacing two towers with one tower. I could tell you that the property owners of the, uh, of the two existing towers would question that. What we can provide you is assurances, uh, that if the, if Crown Castle agrees to, to consolidate its two towers onto one of the existing sites, the other existing site will agree not to have a tower. So, the only way you can have the, uh, complete assurance that no, uh, no, uh, that you will only have one tower in the future would be that if you consolidated the two towers onto one of the existing sites. And I have that from both, uh, SM Calverton LLC and from Lysom Associates, uh, that, uh, they would agree that if you co-located the two existing towers onto one of the existing sites, that the other site would agree to not have a tower in the future. So, that's the way you can get that assurance. The neg, the neglect that was adopted by the town board had a condition that, uh, that the replacement, uh, consolidation and replacement of the tower would result in a, in a reducing the number of towers. And the only way that you could be assured of that is by locating the replacement tower on one of the existing sites.
Uh, may I, may I respond to this, uh, this witness or commenter?
Go ahead.
Sure. Um, so, first, the comments about the cleared property, I believe you're speaking about the adjacent property to the, to the south of us. That's the Lawler property. That's not exactly our property. There are tree coverage on our property. It's been shown on the site plan drawings. Can go through it again. Um, but again, so, is, is your statement, um, that you represent one of, one of the clients here, but you're going to make an offer for both of the property owners?
I represent two property owners.
You represent both of them? Okay.
No, not both of the, not both of the cell tower sites. I represent SM Calverton, who owns the hundred-and-eleven acres that surrounds the Lawler Stone property. And I represent Lysom Associates, who, uh, Associates LLC, who owns the site where one of the towers is located.
Okay, and now I understand better. Thank you. Um, so, but, an offer for involving both of the towers, you're saying that you have something in writing, though, that, that says both of those? I don't, I don't want to get too far into this because the end of the answer really is, is that we've been down this road before. Um, I have someone who's a leasing attorney who can speak to this. Um, you know, this isn't a new issue. The reason we're here today is because there has been a problem with securing the future viability of these sites. The long-term leases in these sites have been an issue, one site being approximately ten years. So, the reason we're here today is because these sites need long-term, future-secured agreements to make sure that the viability for a wireless network that operates nine-one-one phone calls doesn't just shut off. What we're here today is to provide, uh, to prevent the worst-case scenario where we get in such a horrible situation where we have to turn off these sites, and we don't have an alternative site to turn on to prevent a gap in coverage. That's our ultimate goal with this application here today. And, and what we're trying to say here is, we've been down this road before, and I appreciate the offer, but there's nothing that gives you a right to these towers. I've gone through the zoning code. You may have a difference of opinion, and I understand that. But I think, under the zoning code, the towers are allowed to exist as they presently exist. But you can only operate them if you have a FCC-licensed carrier to operate a cellphone tower. And what we've submitted, and I can pull it up, is we have a sworn statement from Crown Castle's Director of Real Estate. Crown Castle is the largest net, uh, infrastructure provider for these wireless telecommunications facilities in the country. We have these agreements with the people that are allowed by the FCC to have this use. And those users are coming with us. They're part of our team. The only four people that are allowed to broadcast on the FCC's allocated spectrums are the people that are going to come over with us because we can't trust the future viability of these two sites. And so, we've been resulted in making this alternative approach today. It, it would have been great to have these two sites exist and never have to come up to this, but now we have a situation where we have to remedy a, a problem. And I think we're also providing something to the town that the town's zoning code encourages. I'll also bring up, again, the, the zoning code. Uh, one of the very beginning, uh, statements, one of the purposes that they want to make sure, um, that we have, uh, minimize the total number of towers throughout the town and encourage the joint use of new and existing. Well, the tower owner that operates and owns both towers that are pretty close to each other right now has an opportunity to do just that, consolidate them. And we have the FCC carriers coming with us. I understand that these property owners are upset because they will, in fact, lose rent out of, as a result of this. But that's not a zoning or planning reason. An offer to, you know, build it on their property and have another attempt to negotiate a lease, that's not a zoning or planning reason to deny this application.
Mr. Kenny?
The application before you is that we have the authority because we own those towers. They may have the land, but we own the actual equipment, and we own the agreements with the carriers that are labeled to operate, uh, this particular type of use.
Mr. Kenny?
So, once we move them over and we take them down, not only do they have to have rebuilt as a presently existing tower, which they can't, they also have a one-year time period to do that.
Mr. Kenny, hold on a second.
So, I can tell you that in the zoning code, there's also a provision.
Hold on a second, please.
Sure.
Mr. Kenny, what does a certificate of occupancy for the towers that are existing say specifically?
What is the, it doesn't matter what the certificate of occupancy says because these both have been operated since this certificate of occupancy. I believe there's been, uh, approvals issued. I have one from twenty nineteen on one of the properties that was recently issued, and you just listed as an AT&amp;T tower.
I, I appreciate that you don't think it matters, but I, I think it might matter. So, I was just wondering if you wouldn't mind telling us what they said.
Sure, I can look those up. I don't think I have that information in front of me. But, uh, for the record, I know one is called a public utility, uh, communications tower, and one is, I believe, called Cellular One, which was AT&amp;T's former company, Cell Tower. So, again, but your zoning code kind of already distinguished what these types of uses were. So, those are certificates of occupancies that were issued in the nineties. There's been applications on these facilities since then. And, again, your zoning code specifically says, as a carve-out provision, if there's any towers that are presently existing, that they are now called presently existing towers. And if I bring up the zoning code definition...
I'm just reading the telecommunications tower definition.
Sure.
So, it's, it's more than just the tower that you're, you're, you know, it doesn't necessarily refer exclusively to cellular or wireless communication.
No, again, what I've said was, was that, so, if they were trying to, so, what you have is you have the zoning code def, definition here. Let me just stick to that, um, of what a pre-existing tower and a pre-existing antenna is. So, it's basically any tower antenna for which a building permit or special use permit's properly been issued. So, in this case, it was a building permit. There's been no special permit issued. So, it is this definition that you have in your zoning code that ties back to, um, the definition I was showing in, or the section I was showing in the wireless telecommunications section, which is, I'm just going to pull it up again, um, section three oh one two eighty. And so, what it means is that these towers are not non-conforming uses, but rather a specific type of use dictated by your zoning code as pre-existing towers and pre-existing antennas. And what that means is that your zoning code then dictates they're only allowed to exist as they presently exist. So, a change from a cell tower to a, uh, radio tower or television tower is a substantial change. It's not as they presently exist. That's, and also, from a practical standpoint, it requires a three-hundred-foot-tall tower. You can't build a radio tower with a hundred-and-twenty-foot-tall, uh, monopole or equipment. It's just, the radio frequency propagation is a different, uh, spectrum, a different wavelength. It just requires a much taller height. It's much slender tower usually. It's also a different type of antenna. And your zoning code even says that pre-existing antennas are allowed to exist. And your zoning code even says that pre-existing antennas are allowed to exist, but if you change out the antennas and they're a substantial change, then you have to have a note, a new zoning process. So when you change from a television, or when you change from telecommunications carrier antenna to a television antenna or to some other type of antenna, that is a change that would have to go through a new zoning process. The way that these towers exist, they presently exist as cellphone towers. And if we have all of the rights to the actual people who have the rights to operate a cellphone tower, which is Verizon, AT&T, T-Mobile, and possibly Dish, then they have no user to put on the end of the end of the steel. So when they file a building permit application to re-establish this use, first question should be is, when ten is going on the tower? And I don't think that they can really answer that question. The reason they're here tonight is they wanna throw a stick in the spokes of my zoning application so that they can be in a better position as landlords in negotiating a lease, saying, you can't go anywhere else. This is the only place you can go. And I think for the, for facilities that handle nine-one-one phone calls, we can't be in that kind of situation. We have to have future, long-term agreements and that they have to be secured on, on really conditions that we can have long-term relationships with. Now, these con, these facilities were built, and sometimes with different property owners, where they've changed hand through, um, through wills, or they've changed hands, um, since they were built. But there's been a long period of time here and right now, we're, we can't continue to go through this uh, relationship of trying to work out a lease for over ten years to make sure that the site doesn't turn off and that there's a gap in service.
Can I reply just to, uh, one of the issues he raised in response to my present, to what my, my statement? Uh, I'd like to share my screen if I could for a moment. I wanna make sure you can see it. Are you able to see that screen?
No.
How about now?
Blank.
Well, there it is.
Right.
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is Fresh Pond Avenue. You are coming up Fresh Pond Avenue, traveling north. This is, the, uh, site outlined in green is my client's property, owned by S M Calverton. The location of the cell tower would be approximately right here. S M Lawler's, uh, excuse me, Lawler Garden property. As you're traveling north on Fresh Pond, the site is completely cleared. And if you've driven up that road in the past, this, there's no trees. You see, this is traveling north. I can also show you on Google map. This is, this is also the, so, can you see the Google map now?
Yeah.
This is the location of the property where they're looking to put the cell tower. Okay, I'm gonna draw, traverse up as you're heading north. This is the location. It is tree directly in front of the site. But this is the property as you're heading. The cell, the cell tower would be located right in this area, right here, as you're looking into the property. As you're driving north, you're passing the auto repair shop. You're coming up to their stone and gravel yard. The cell tower would be right there as you're traveling north. This is the entrance to the cell tower property right here. That's the cell, that's where the cell.
That's incorrect. Uh, that's not our entrance. We've applied for a new curb cut.
Okay, well, let's go back then. Let's go back to the other map. This is the site. I measured the setbacks that you were proposing. This is the, I can, can you see the property line here? This is the property they're gonna be located on, right here. They're putting that tower right in this location, right about here. That's the measurement, which is seventy, seventy-two point ninety-two feet from my client's property line, which is right here in green. It's located about right here. That's where the tower's gonna be. If you pan out, I'll bring back up the Google map. The tower would be located about, about, uh, about where this pile is, right here. As you're traveling north, this whole area is cleared. It's all cleared along this whole frontage. The current tower locations, this is one of the current tower locations right here. That's the one across the street. The one to the south is located right here, also in the trees. And this is my client's property, which is surrounded by, which surrounds the site that's being proposed.
Uh, Chris, I, I have one question. Can you zoom back into the property to the south that has the existing cell tower? One of your comments was, you, you have a, an objection, I guess, to the reduced fall zone radius. Could you show the property outline of that property? Could you show?
We own both, we own all the property though.
Yeah, I understand, but, so.
This is, this is the location. Same size, it's on the same size parcel that you're looking to develop.
Right, um, but not true because we, we meet the setbacks of a hundred and twenty feet to the north.
Look, look at the acreage. Point ninety-four is the acreage there. The acreage of your side.
Are the setbacks meant on that property?
It's point ninety-nine.
If the, if the zoning code have to go through the same height of the tower, does the setbacks be met on that one? On the existing site right there?
It's mu, not much different than yours.
But the question is.
No, the setbacks would not be.
Thank you.
We own, we own both this property.
Can you go to the other, can you go to the other, can you go to the other site?
Sure. And again, this property is owned, the property is local, it's a lot contained on a piece of property that's completely owned by the same people.
I, I understand. I appreciate that. Uh, if you go in though, that existing tower that's there, does that meet the setbacks either?
It meets some of the setbacks, yes.
Yeah, it does? From, from the front yard, from the front yard and one side yard?
I can measure you the, I can measure.
No, 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 I, I, I agree with that. So, but, but one side yard to the north and one rear yard, it does not meet, correct?
Correct, but they own the surrounding.
Oh, so the same.
They have no neighbors.
Hold on, hold on, but the same exact variance request that we're applying for on this site is two reduced side yard, uh, one, one reduced side yard and one reduced year, rear yard to meet the zoning code requirement, which again, we've also included a hinge point, which allows that the tower would fall within the property zones. Neither of these two existing facilities include that. So right now, as they presently exist, we are actually correcting an issue that may be a danger to adjoining property owners. Now, you may own the surrounding properties, but they're separate parcels, so they're separate zoning parcels. So we're actually correcting an issue on that. And I do appreciate, uh, your concern for the people that may drive along Fresh Pond Ave and see this tower. There aren't many residences here. And we've shown that from those residences that can see it, that would be able to see it, yes. We've shown, and I can bring up the view, the, my photo sims again. I've shown viewpoints where there's people who presently see two towers and our application would reduce that to one tower. And again, the town board took that into consideration and issued a negative declaration as part of the visual impact. We, we do respect our property owner to the north because we wanna be good neighbors and we can put additional trees there. I'm sure Crown Castle can also put additional plantings along the front of Fresh Pond Ave or along the southern, uh, side of the property. If landscaping is an issue for this, uh, project, we can propose additional landscaping. What, what we can't do is we can't have a situation that presently exists where we have two properties, where we don't have long-term agreements for these sites and we don't know if we can secure the sites from preventing from being turned off in the event of a worst-case scenario.
Well, I think you have one of the property owners or maybe two of the principals of the property owner to this site here. Again, look at the trees, look at the, look at the visual impacts of these sites. This, this, these are the existing sites here and here. These are the existing sites.
A Google Earth map, not a correct way to do a, a, a visual representation. You don't have photos from, people don't look from a bird's eye view of these towers. I can bring up my photo sims again if you want me to bring the whole presentation that we did at the last meeting. But again, I would bring to this, bring to this, bring to this board, this board that he's discussing would be maybe some people along Fresh Pond Ave, right as they pass the facility, would look to the right and could see this tower. But he's not showing you that people can see both of the existing towers in the same thing. If they drive by and they look to the right, they can see those towers. So I have photos that I can bring up if, if you want me to go through the photo sims again, which show that those towers can be seen today. But the more important views are further off where you have those residences, approximately a thousand feet away. And they, today, when they look, many of them can see two towers. And it's not necessary if we can put it as one tower. And the zoning code encourages consolidating the towers and reducing the number of towers. And I, I appreciate your, your arguments and, and your, and your appeal for your client, but this is no longer, you, we're getting away from the zoning question of the variance in the fall zone radius and, and you're kind of questioning whether or not the town board was correct to issue the neg deck. There'll be another bite of that apple. This won't, if we get an approval today, this won't be the end of our application. We still have to go to the town board and maybe they'd be willing to hear whether or not they're correct on their neg deck at that time.
I'd like to hear from any, I'd like to hear from anyone else on. Chris and, uh, Mr. Kenny? Uh, I'd like to hear from anyone else that's, that's, uh, on.
Uh, I wanna speak.
You gotta shut your phone off, hold on. Yeah. Yeah.
Chris?
Yes?
Uh, you wanna stop sharing the screen?
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to reopen my Zoom. I apologize. I'm having some trouble reopening. Oh, here we go. Did I stop sharing for you?
There you go.
All right, let's hear from, who's up next?
My name is Mehretat Kohanim, M E H R D A T, last name Kohanim.
Did we swear you in last time?
Excuse me?
Were you sworn in last time?
Yes, I was, yeah.
Uh, just, yeah, just your name and your address.
Mehretat Kohanim, four Somerset Drive South, Great Neck, New York, one-one-zero-two-zero. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Simak Associates, who's the owner of the tower which is across the street from the tower that's being proposed by the applicant. I am here to oppose the application and I sincerely, uh, tell this board that the applicant is not deserving of the variance that it's requesting. Uh, main reason for that is, uh, I think the applicant is getting ahead of itself in the sense that we have to figure out what, what this problem, why is this problem coming about? The reason is, this is a self-created problem. These folks are looking for an area variance. They have chosen a property that does not meet the requirements of the town. They have created that problem because they don't want to deal with their landlords. Let's be honest about this. And they keep, Mr. Kenny indicated that there's, uh, shown a lot of concern for the people and the fact that there are people living in the area and they have to have, uh, they have to have, uh, cellular service and emergency, uh, emergency, uh, vehicles and things like that. I, I, I have a question for Mr. Kenny and I wanna know, he represents Crown Castle and I wanna know how much income Crown Castle made last year? What was the income of Crown Castle last year? And I wanna know, I, I, I wanna know if they lost any money? Did, I mean, this, basically you described a monopoly. You indicated that this monopoly wants to control all the towers on Long Island and they controlled all the carriers on Long Island. And you represent a company, a monopoly, that's gonna tell everybody how they're gonna live their life, how the communications are gonna take place in, 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 in town or in the head.
Sir?
That, that's what you're proposing.
Just gonna interrupt you briefly. The, the, this board is concerned with the, the area variance and so the, the issues of who the applicant is and what their business, uh, finances are is not something this board can consider or would consider. The, the things that they can consider is, are whether there would be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, whether the benefit could be achieved by another method, whether the variance is substantial, whether it would have adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood and whether it's self-created. Those are the only criteria this board could use. So I think I just stick to those if you can and not, uh, talk about the personal interpersonal business dealings between you and the applicant.
Thank you, Councilor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I, as I said, I believe that, that the, the problem is self-created. I don't think that, uh, Crown Castle is a utility that could come in and, and ask for special preferences. And we believe that the current, uh, towers are, have blended into the community. They've been there for more than thirty-five years, or they're more than thirty years, I think, and they're part of the community. The tower which is located in, in the Simak property is certainly covered by years and years of foliage. I know Mr. Kenny indicated that it could at some angles be seen if you're outside the property, but I submit to you that that particular tower is well-hidden from most, most directions because it's been there for a prolonged period of time and it's tucked away, uh, away from the road and away from any site, sightlines as far as I know. And I think that the erection of the new tower will just create a, an eyesore in the neighborhood because it will be a new tower and it will be, if you're going up Fresh Pond Ave, you, it will create a very on-site, the, uh, situation for the residents of the area. Uh, I had submitted previously to this, uh, two letters to the board and I want them to be considered when you, uh, make a decision on this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else to be, or?
May I just, I'll be really brief. May I just give one response? I just, I just wanna share the screen. He made the statement that his tower's not visible. Again, I, I think this is a clear, uh, objective of this facility. Uh, there's the two existing facilities right here. Both are clearly visible near residences as you get further away and our project would reduce that. I, I just wanted.
I wanna go back to that because I, I don't even think that's the tower. I, I wanna go back to that because I don't think that's even the tower.
Okay, well, again, let's stick to the issue and I'd like to hear some from somebody else.
Sure.
I, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Um, Donna Bajorgi.
Did we swear you in last time?
Yes.
Go ahead, just state your name and your address.
Uh, Donna Bajorgi, three-three, Fresh Pond Ave, Calvert, New York. Um, I'm the property owner north of the proposed site, so I guess just three real quick things. Uh, when you do drive down Fresh Pond, you really don't see either tower until you're right next to it and you look and it's there. As you drive, you look up, you don't see either tower at all. And we live almost directly across the street from one. Two, um, I guess the, the lot that they're on, because it is cleared from the, um, the auto place up until where that, um, the entranceway is, it is very clear. So when you will, when you drive up Fresh Pond, you will definitely see it. And I highly doubt you're gonna be able to grow trees, you know, forty-year-old trees that are gonna hide it, just like the other two are hidden. And I under, I, you know, I appreciate the, the good neighbor measure. Um, but again, I also don't think you're gonna be able to plant mature trees that are gonna fully cover a hundred and twenty-foot pole right in the back of our lot.
If I may briefly respond, so we do have other, you know, facilities where, where in areas where we have to provide screening. Uh, there are types of trees, li lands that are fast-growing, um, correct. We wouldn't be able to block the entire a hundred and twenty-foot facility. One of the reasons the facility has to be, its height has to be above the trees to propagate the, uh, signal. That's why both of the existing facilities are above the tree lines as they are today. Um, yeah, I, it, and, and again, from your property, we'd be willing to do whatever we can to help, you know, kind of block those views. And I, I do appreciate, you know, not wanting to see a tower as you drive up Fresh Pond Ave, but I think the town is required to look a little bit larger than just maybe the potential view of someone driving along Fresh Pond Ave. Whereas people own property that can today see two towers and maybe there's a possibility with this application to having them only see one tower from their property. them only see one tower from their property. And I, the larger, the impact, the larger, um, the view shed, so to speak, um, it kind of brings in more views to be considered than just an immediate drive along Fresh Pond Ave. And, and again, this, the negative declaration is, is attested to that.
You know, I think one of the nice things about driving around this area is that it's just a nice area to drive around.
The sight plan condition.
Yeah, I think this is more an issue for the town board than the site, sight plan.
But we're going to work to see if we can do additional landscaping to help any easier concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else to be heard?
Can I just say one last thing really, it'd be very brief. It'll be thirty seconds.
Go ahead.
Brief. Okay, first of all, anyway, any, if they make a decision to put a monopole on one of the existing two sites, you will be assured there'll only be one site. That's one thing. The second thing is, you, it, the point that the current sites don't need zoning, you have an opportunity to make sure the next site meets zoning. Why would you allow them to place this monopole on a site that's too small to meet the setback requirements when you have neighbors who are opposing it? And they're looking for a forty percent reduction in the setback requirement from my client's property? They have enough money, there are probably other sites that could be available. Why don't they locate on a site that can meet the requirements and not require a variance? Or locate their new pole on one of the existing sites and remove one of the non-conforming sites? Why create a new non-conforming site? That's my question.
I, I just have to respond to that real quick. Again, the two existing towers, both have been shown that they don't meet the setback for the height of the tower and neither of them have the hinge point that reduces the fall zone radius. So if they fell over, under the worst-case scenario, they could fall over and cross a property line. This tower that we're proposing has that hinge point to reduce the fall zone radius. So while I appreciate the concern, you've heard from the surrounding property owners, one is a residential property, we can't locate the tower there. And the other property owners have shown up here and tried to throw a stick in the spokes of a zoning application to bet, to get better leverage in a lease negotiation.
We're willing to give up our tower. We're, we're a neighboring property owner and we're willing to, if, choose the other site. That, that isn't my client.
We have, we have a site that works from a zoning standpoint. We have reasons why it has to be better located in between the two towers. This allows us to have the same existing height. If we get further away from being in between the two existing towers, it requires us to get taller than a hundred and twenty feet because we have to then reach back over to the coverage area. Right now, we've found a property that's in between the two existing towers that's ideally located from a radio frequency standpoint to consolidate the two towers. Can't go further away from the two towers to consolidate. We have to go in between. And we found the only viable property in between the two towers.
Is there anyone else to be heard? You got anyone else on there?
Well, some of this is repetitious, okay?
Yeah, if anyone has anything else to say about this matter that isn't repetitious, we're only too happy to hear you, but that's it. Okay. Who's got this? Let's, let's put this off until. Reserve decision. Yeah.
Till when?
Uh, January fourteenth.
Will the public hearing be closed tonight or, or is it going to be?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, uh, should we reserve this? I have a question. That Mr. Kenny indicated that he had submitted new documents to the board and that was done sometimes in November, I was heard. When was the last time documents were submitted?
Correct, we made it a November sixth submission.
Uh, I haven't seen that. Is there any way I could get time to see it and submit something in reply if appropriate?
No, we're going to reserve.
We'll leave it, we'll leave it open for written, for, uh, any written.
Comments.
Comments that you have. But other than that, we're closing the meeting tonight.
You can do ten days and then.
Yeah, you have ten days to submit. So Mr. Kenny, if you would supply him with the paperwork he's looking for?
Sure, we, it was submitted with the application. This is a copy of it right here, um, but I'll supply a copy to the applicant. It's really just one letter, um, where again, it, it's the sworn statement I was speaking to earlier tonight. Uh, Crown Castle has legal authority to remove, has a legal authority to relocate and will do so. And then the only other thing is in the cover letter, uh, we offered to plant additional landscaping, uh, to be a good neighbor.
Okay, I, I, I guess that's somewhere in the, I could get ahold of that. I, I will call you and maybe you could email that to me or something.
So we'll, we'll take written.
I think the proper way is to go through the, the town, but I, I can email it to you. That's fine.
Fine, I will go through the town, not a big problem.
Okay, written?
Thank you.
We're, we're open for written comments, the ten days, other than that, this meeting is closed. Let's hear a motion.
Chairman, I move that appeal number twenty twenty dash zero three, a Crown Castle, Fresh Pond Avenue, Calverton. You move to January four, twenty, uh, excuse me, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one for a reserved decision. It'll be open for ten days for written comments. Period.
Second. Okay, Mr. Barnes?
Hi.
Thank you for your time, Board. I appreciate you.
Mr. Gazzolo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So thank you very much. We'll talk to you folks on the fourteenth of January.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Stay well.
All right there, Felissa.
Okay, appeal number twenty twenty zero four seven, Vanessa Kralich, one twenty-one Point Street, South Jamesport, tax map number six hundred ninety-two-two twenty-two-point-three, RB forty zoning for variances under relief from chapter three oh one, section fifteen A one B, where existing side yard setback is one point nine feet and minimum required is twenty feet. Section fifteen A one D, where shed is four point five feet from rear property line and minimum required is five feet. And section fifteen A two, where fence six feet in height in front yard and maximum height permitted is four feet.
Okay. Anybody have any, anything else to add to this?
Um, good evening, uh, Chairman and members of the board. This is Lisa Ross, um, from Essex F Angel Battalion in Pasca for the applicant Vanessa Kralich. Um, this application was held over till today to give the board time to investigate. Um, at the last meeting, the only opposition was put in by the neighbors to the north, the Johnsons, who had testified. Um, but their only opposition was to, actually to the shower itself, not even the shower enclosure wall. Um, and they also testified that they had moved their fence three feet closer to the Kralich's house. And also, um, that they had a security camera pointed into, uh, the Kralich's yard. So, um, I just, I, we had dropped off a couple of letters with photos to the board. Um, one from November eighteenth, uh, because one of the complaints, uh, the Johnsons had was about water running in their yard. And, um, we submitted a photo showing that when the shower was actually reconstructed, that a drywall was put in under the shower so that, that water is not running into their yard. The water is maintained on the site. And, um, we also dropped off a letter on December eighth showing that the Johnsons have now moved their security camera to point into the backyard, right where the outdoor shower, where they're asking, or basically where that shower enclosure wall is. And we wanted to bring it to the attention of the board that how important it is for Ms. Kralich to have that, not only that enclosure wall there to protect her with the shower, but also the six-foot fence along the property line. Um, and I think we established at the last, at the last hearing that the benefit to her and, and how important it is to her to have a little bit of privacy in a situation like that where the houses are so close, um, that the benefit to her outweighs any kind of detriment to anybody else in the community. And we ask that the variance, variances be granted. And I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that the board has.
Was the shower moved?
Excuse me?
Was the shower moved? Because at the end of the testimony last week, there was some talk that if the shower was, was moved, that would solve many of the problems.
Well, the shower, I mean, we didn't, we will, we weren't agreeing to the movement of the shower. The shower's been in its current location for more than twenty years. Literally, the, the neighbors to the north moved their fence closer to the house. I mean, of course, it's their property line, they have the ability to do that, but now they moved their fence three feet closer and now they're complaining that they can hear the shower. And to me, that's something that they created themselves. Um, the client is not willing to move the shower where it's, it's the location it's always been. The only thing the variance is really needed for is the outside enclosure wall, which is one point nine feet to the, um, to the common boundary line. Um, and the house itself is only two point nine feet from the common boundary line. Um, and there's a, there's a variance from nineteen eighty-nine that allowed that to remain. So we were asking for that to be treated as a variance for that out, shower enclosure wall also, so that only a one-foot variance would be required.
Okay. All right, anyone else to be heard? Anybody have any questions before we move on? All right, is anyone else on board here to be heard on this matter?
My client was not available today.
That's okay. That's all right.
All right. She's, she's got, uh, somebody very ill in her family with COVID, so.
Okay. All right, nobody else to be heard on this matter? Let's, uh, have a reserved, let's close it and have a reserved decision for January
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Vanessa Kralich, one twenty-one Point Street, South Jamesport, uh, I, I move that the meeting be closed and we have a reserved decision for January fourteenth.
Second.
All right. Mr. Gazzolo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll see you folks on the fourteenth and we'll have a decision for it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Felissa?
Okay, appeal number twenty twenty zero four nine, Lawrence Ferrone, thirty-five Sound Road, Waiting River, tax map number six hundred forty-nine-one thirty-five-point-two, RB eighty zoning for, uh, three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed side yard setback is ten point nine feet and minimum required is twenty feet. And section two twenty-two E, where enlargement of garage creates an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming structure.
Okay, who's the applicant? Who's the applicant? There's got to be somebody out there that wants to speak. Larry?
There's Judith Ferrone on there, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. And if you can hear me, just raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth of your butchers' truth or self-debt?
I do.
Then state your name and your address.
Lawrence Ferrone, thirty-five Sound Road, Waiting River, New York.
Okay, let's hear your, let's hear what you want to do.
Uh, I'd like to demolish the existing garage, um, and replace it with a larger one, uh, while maintaining the ten point nine feet, uh, side yard.
Is it going to have any, is this going to be for storage?
Is there a second floor?
Uh, it'll be for cars.
Will there be a second floor in the garage?
It'll be for storage. Uh, yeah, there would be storage above, uh, the roof pitch is, uh, you know, would be sufficient if I needed additional storage, yes.
It's a very deep garage, proposing.
Uh, yeah, right now, uh, the garage is fourteen by twenty and there's an attached shed to the rear which is eight by twelve, giving it a total length of twenty-eight feet and I'm asking to extend it to thirty.
Okay, so there's no.
I'm also asking to.
There's no water, or, or how about electricity to the building?
There's not, no water or electricity to the existing garage, no.
And will there be?
I would like to run electric, uh, to the garage, yes.
Okay, but no water?
To the proposed garage.
Okay.
No water.
All right, board members, anybody have any questions?
No.
It's a beautiful old house you have there, Mr. Ferrone.
I'm sorry?
It's a beautiful old home you have there.
Oh, thank you. Yes, we fell in love with it. When we first saw it and we're, you know, I hope to live here for another fifty.
Well, good luck with that. All right, anybody else have any questions? Who's got a reading? Is there any, anybody else out there that wants to be heard on this matter? Nobody?
Uh, I'm sorry?
No, not you. We're just seeing if there's anyone else that we, wants to be heard. And we have nobody, so what type of reading?
Yeah, so it's not the right reading. Let me see.
I don't see it. Yeah.
Thank you. And then fifty dollars. Do you have? I'll take it. All right. No, I got it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Lawrence Ferrone, thirty-five Sound Road, Waiting River, Suffolk County, tax map six hundred dash forty-nine dash one dash thirty-five-point-two, RB eighty zoning for variances indoor relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-one, where proposed side yard setback is ten point nine feet and a minimum required is twenty feet. And section two 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 E, where enlargement of garage creates an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming structure be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments there, two, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So moved.
Mr. Gazzolo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been granted about two weeks from now, you can continue on with the project.
Thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
You too, Mr. Ferrone.
Thank you. Hello? May I say something?
Oh, boy.
This is Charlie Johnson?
This is on the same matter?
No, sir. I was trying to get my audio going when you were talking about the Kralich stuff and I couldn't get my audio going on the unit to speak to you.
About what? About what?
About the shower and the yard and the variances?
Well.
What do I do?
Yeah, I mean, you, you closed the hearing, you could, I guess you could move to reopen it if you wanted to.
Nobody's here to respond to him, though.
Yeah, they're already all.
It's one twenty-five Point Street I live. I live next door to the Kralich's. And they're one twenty-one.
So you take written testimony and, uh?
You could ask him for something in writing.
How about putting, how about putting something in writing? We have closed the meeting. How about putting something in writing? We'll give you ten days to get it to us and we'll have a decision on the fourteenth of January.
All right, that would be very good because, thank you.
Okay.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye now.
Fantastic.
All right, what would it be writing to get it to the town board? So I got to keep hold of the shot. Let's get Chris back up.
Who's that? That's her. This lady with a hidden camera.
Are you ready for the next one, Fred?
All set.
Okay. Appeal number twenty twenty zero five zero, Patricia Sapienza, five fifty-four Rayner Avenue, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one twenty-three one twenty-one, RA forty zoning for variances under relief from chapter three oh one, section eight C, where habitable space and detached structure deemed not to be a customary accessory use to the principal single-family use which is not permitted.
Okay, who's, who's to be heard?
Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you. What do you need to?
I'm, uh, appearing for applicant, uh, Ms. Sapienza. My name is Joseph Palermo. I'm with the law offices of Harvey Arnoff, um, in two oh six Renault Avenue, Riverhead, New York, one one nine zero one. Good evening, everybody.
All right, you have the floor.
I'm also here, this is Patricia, but it says Jordan by my name because I'm using my.
Sure, just raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth of your butchers' truth or self-debt?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name and your, uh, your address, Mrs. Sapienza.
Patricia Sapienza, five. Patricia Sapienza, five five four Raynor Avenue, Riverhead, New York, one one nine oh one.
Okay. So why don't we let your counselor speak first and then if you have anything to add to it, you're welcome.
Yes.
Hi, Patricia, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So this application is for, uh, variances for relief from chapter three oh one, section eight C, for an accessory living space, which Ms. Sapienza is using, um, to provide housing for her caretakers. Uh, preliminarily, I would like to just address that I am aware there are other violations on the property. Um, the vi- these other violations are being dealt with by Mr. Aronoff and Eric Howard in, uh, Riverhead Justice Court. Um, so today I am here to discuss her application for the accessory living space. And, um, really, I can keep it short and sweet and then let Ms. Sapi- Sapienza speak. Uh, Ms. Sapienza certainly really just has major health issues and she relies on these caretakers that are, um, residing in the accessory living space, her garage. Right now, the caretakers are living in the garage and they are providing help to her. They're cooking for her, they're cleaning for her. They're not cooking in the garage, though, I just want to make that clear. They are cooking in Ms. Sapienza's house and they're actually eating with her. She's very close with these people. And I just want to impress upon the board tonight that Ms. Sapienza is a woman with very limited means with extreme health problems and she relies on these people to maintain her health and really keep her alive at this point. And this is the only, the only way she can afford to, um, have the type of care. So she really does, uh, she really does need these people living with her and the, the only place they can reside is what she's using as an accessory living space. Um, that's really all I have to say. I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sapienza at this point. You can go. Patricia, you can go.
Yeah, my internet keeps going out. I didn't hear what you said, but I just wanna, um, say what he said. I, I have a lady that's been helping me since I had a serious health issue two years ago. I'm blessed to be here. Um, there's no kitchen, no accessory in the facility. It's just a big room. It has-
Okay.
Room she uses as a bedroom and a bathroom. And they do help me quite a bit. It's habitable space, which was there prior when I bought the facility in, uh, two thousand fourteen, and I'm just utilizing it now. I'm not renting it to anyone.
Okay. Well, our counselor is trying to look into the possibility of helping along a temporary granting of you using that space to these folks. Uh, that's something we're gonna have to look into. We understand the issue and certainly sympathize with you. And, uh, we will see what we can do for you.
Appreciate it.
That we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
So why don't we, uh, why don't we adjourn this meeting to the fourteenth of January? It gives us some time to, uh, look into what we can help you out with and then we'll, uh, we'll take it from there.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Mrs. Sapienza, all the best. Have a good holiday and we got this to move on to.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good holiday.
Happy holidays, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Patricia, I'll call you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Patricia Sapienza, five five four Raynor Avenue, Riverhead, SCTM number six hundred dash one two three dash one dash two one dash RA four zero zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three zero one, section eight C, where habitable sta- space and detached structure deemed not to be a customary accessory use to principal single-family use, which is not permitted, be adjourned till January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Decision reserved in accordance with the application and sketches with amendments there, two if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes? Okay, and I vote aye. See, we've adjourned this matter to January fourteenth. We'll see you then. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
Show move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a mo- permission? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Show move, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a motion to wish everyone a good holiday and a happy new year?
Merry Christmas. Happy new year.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the record will reflect that Leroy Barnes' dog participated this evening?